Select Boards Meeting, July tenth, two thousand nineteen. In attendance Chairman Fox, Mr. Mowgli, Mr. Dede, Mr. Steinhardt, and Cindy Pendleton.
All right, good evening in the Select Board Meeting, July tenth, two thousand nineteen. The first thing on the agenda is public comments. And that gives people not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Select Board, an opportunity. We ask that you please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here that is interested? I see a young lady over there.
Come on, sit next to me.
Right up here, I, I'm right here. I know by heart.
And could you state your name, young lady?
Sure. Ruth Gallagher. One twelve Congamon Road, Southwick, Massachusetts.
All right, Ruth, you have the floor.
Okay, I have been working for the last two or three months. I'm just back in Southwick. I had to move from Westfield to Southwick. There is no transportation for handicapped people to go anywhere to Westfield, Springfield. The Senior Center only has their bus, which only brings you to the doctors or to the grocery store. And that's it. I talked to someone there and she said, maybe I can do it one day, but you might get bumped off. I have a note from my doctor that says that it's mandatory that I swim three times a week, mentally and physically. And I said, there is no transportation in Southwick. I was taking the PVTA in Westfield, but they said they don't do come here. They said that there's no route here, so they can't come. So who gives the route to them or has them come here? Or where can I get transportation? That's a question. Discipline Act says it's mandatory that I get some type of transportation. I need a van with a lift because I don't want to put anybody, you know, they said, I'll go to the church. Someone from the church will help you. I can't expect somebody to lift my scooter and put it in, if they get hurt. It's my fault. I don't want to hurt anybody lifting this. So I really need like a lift from a man or something. I have called every senator and the state senator here. He never returned my call at all. And we hand-delivered the letter that my doctor wrote. And I brought one with me stating that I need this service. And he never even called me, ever. He said, oh, I'll call you in about a week. It's been three months. Never heard a word from him. I mean, I don't understand. If someone can explain a little bit, it'd be nice, but I don't know where to go or who to turn to. I called Donald Humerson. His associate, John, I forget his last name, came and talked to the Senior Center. And she said, oh, well, we'll take care of Ruth. We'll, we'll get her a van. I called and she said, well, maybe, but you might get bumped off. I said, bumped off? I said, I make arrangements to go to the Boys and Girls Club to swim and you're going to bump me off? I said, that doesn't even make sense. I said, I, I honestly, I, I don't know where to turn or where to go next. I just need some. I called the PV. I've called the main PV office in Boston. They said that the one who gets the PV to be here is the selectman in Southwick that controls that, not them. So they said, you have to go and talk to them. So that's sort of one reason I'm here, to see what I can do, help. I need help. I have to swim. And it's, my husband brings me, but he works. My daughter's been helping me out and bringing me down there. But if I wanted to find a job, I have no transportation. If I want to do volunteer work, how do I get there? If you're in Westfield, you got the PV, you can go anywhere. They bring you anywhere you want to go for three dollars and fifty cents.
That's the bus itself?
Nope, the little ADA, ADA bus, the little small one.
Comes whenever you want to, you get beck and call, anytime?
Anytime. You call them, you say, okay, I'm Ruth Gallagher, I'm not such and such. I need to be at Boys and Girls Club around eight o'clock. There they are, pick me up and take me right to the boys' club. What time you got to get picked up? I'm there about two hours swimming. I need to be home. I say for a meeting, you sort of learn these little tricks. For eleven o'clock, they got you there right at eleven. I can't say more for the PVT. They treated me terrific. And I'm sure that there's other people here in Southwick that could use the PVTA, not just me. There's two, what, two, three seniors, senior centers, centers or places where they live. They run across from the fire station and the, they got to have people in there that need help. They have the same thing. They have a van that only brings you to the doctors or grocery shopping. That's it. And only certain days, maybe Monday or Tuesday. It all depends on their schedule, which is fine. I mean, you know, they have to have a schedule. I went to the American Inn, same thing there. They have a van. PV doesn't, they could make, because they can make, what, how many miles, Jack?
Three quarters of a mile.
Three quarters of a mile from the south, from the Westfield line into Southwick. So American Inn would probably make it. But to live there, you have to be a millionaire. You cannot, it's so expensive. It's out of this world. I went there too to see. But I honestly, I'm lost. I have no idea who else to call. Like I said, I've talked to senators, I've talked to, a lot of them said, contact twenty-two News or Channel forty and get your story on there and see if they will help you. I said, well, I wanted to give Southwick a chance to see if they can help. I'm not out to hurt anybody or to hurt Southwick. I love, like I said, to the lady that I talked to, I said, my family have lived here sixty-two years or more, paid taxes for sixty-two years, owned Lakeview Inn and paid taxes, never late. I said, all I ask is for a ride to Westfield. I don't think that's too much to ask, so.
Well, I don't think so either. If the systems were in place, as you've already figured out, they're not.
Right.
So that's a whole nother.
That's another issue.
Ball of wax that we have to look at.
Right.
Yeah.
And I understand that, but.
The question is, how do we get it rolling?
Well, I guess we have to look into it, that's for sure.
Yeah. And I've talked to other people in Southwick that said they could use the same thing.
Well, we got the best chairman in the world.
Oh, I know.
Let me tell you, he will do whatever he can, money.
Right. I, I'm going to, and I told Jack.
Yes, dear.
You can make a statement. We're not supposed to have back and forth because you're not on the agenda.
I never shut up.
But, but I'm going to just, I'm going to break the rule a little bit, just a little bit. Because when Jack contacted me several weeks ago, the board did have a work session. We did agree to meet with the Council on Aging and ask them about a review. Years ago, we signed an agreement and went with Franklin.
Quite a while.
Franklin Regional Transit. Okay, that was a decision made.
Four decades.
Four decades ago, all right? And periodically, we do review it. I also reached out to the Cindy Sullivan, our director, Council on Aging Director. And I know that you've spoken to her also.
Yes.
And she is reaching out to different agencies to see if there's something that we can do in the interim to, to help you a little better than what we can offer at this time. Yes, there are other people. We're well aware of that. It boils down to a, a funding issue.
Well, that's what they said.
We're, we're a small town. But I got to end that, I broke the rule enough.
I know, okay.
But it is being worked on, okay? Is it going to happen overnight? It is not. I'm going to be honest with you, Ruth, it's not, okay? Because the review process has to begin and we have to do research, probably work with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And it's, it's a long process. It's not, I know people down there probably told the board, selectmen can just take a vote. It's not that simple.
No, it's not that simple. I didn't think it was, no. Nothing is simple. I found that out.
Right. But Cindy, keep in touch with Cindy Sullivan. And she will try, I talked to her again this morning. She will try to do anything she possibly can to assist you.
Very good. I just went to Noble. I filled out for, you know, you hate to do these things, but for mass health. Because you get mass health, they provide.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Yep.
I said, I felt guilty doing it though. I said, I don't need mass health, I, I have insurance. But she said, if you get, I went to a social worker. She said, if you get mass health, they can provide you with rides.
Yep.
Or you can get a divorce from your husband, they said. Isn't that nice?
Well, knowing Jack's nice side.
I saw someone smiling behind you. I don't know if that's her husband.
I know he likes golfing a lot.
He's got his suitcase just walking out. Now she needs a ride now.
Second year in me, let me tell you.
That will be our home.
Yeah, all right.
But anyways, I appreciate, I appreciate you listening. I, I thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And, and I would like to point out to the board that this is another great member of the greatest class in the town of Southwick.
Oh, another one.
Last in nineteen seventy-five.
Like six of you know.
You're right on the corner of Berkshire and Congamon, right?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you, Ruth.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We will go on. The next thing we have is after public comments. I'm sorry. Oh, anybody else for public comment?
I'm pretty sure.
I don't see any hands raised, so we're going to go on. The first thing, six forty Crepes Tea House regarding approval of restaurant commodiculars license. Good night.
Have a seat.
Okay. Hang on, while you're taking a seat, we'll give the vice chairman a minute. Especially since we fixed your name.
You brought the boss with you.
We should get a pack of crayons.
Just for these once in a while occasions?
Well, because they're not at the age where they use these things.
Oh, I beg to differ. I beg to differ.
Well, not at the moment.
Do you have one of these?
Telephone?
She's smiling. Do you have one that all you play with?
Sorry, thank you. You, no problem. All right. I, I guess we're getting ready to welcome you to the town of Southwick. Would you like to take the opportunity to give us the rundown?
After we open, I hope, with food and everything. So now it's still, you know, doing whatever we can to be as fast as possibly open, you know? So place is great. I mean, town so far is great. Everybody's so helpful. We don't see any complaints. I mean, if we can be helpful too, eventually, running business, paying taxes, accommodating. If any complaints, please let us know. I mean, we're not, you know, everybody does mistakes. So if we see something which you don't like we're doing, we're willing to, you know, work and see what can be done to, you know, accommodate everybody as possible. So we've been in West Springfield, so a lot of people from that area know us. We've been there for like nine years. I mean, great relationship with the town and neighborhood. We're working with local schools and, you know, whatever we can help them with some donations and, I mean, you know, employing kids, you know, we raise some events, like different types of festivals and whatever we can do to, you know, make a living plus kind of raise a good community, be part of that good community.
Super. What type of restaurant? You want to get into that?
Yeah, I can explain a little bit. So whole idea, we, most of our employees and including myself, we're from Eastern Europe. Like, I'm, I'm from Lithuania. Some people from Poland, from Russia, Belarus. Business partners from Latvia. So we kind of, we try to introduce that type of food. But again, this is not like completely off. It's all locally used products and like we work with a farm in Russell. We, we get the milk with Amish farm. I don't know.
Yep.
Apparently, one of the guys who lives in Grainville sold that, his, his parents sold that farm in Russell to Amish.
Yep, yep.
So we, we buy raw products and make some food and we make our farm cheese, sour cream, you know, doing from scratch and basically home cooking. We don't buy too much product ready. Most of them, it's like all raw stuff. And also, we're selling atmosphere. It's not just the food. It's not like, you know, some people want to catch up on the times just to hang out and stuff like that. We're all for it. Only difference which we've seen with the Springfield, this place is going to have liquor license. So we're not ready yet because we're still going through a procedure to transfer that. I never had one, so never, never tried to have one. This one came in a package with a deal which we purchased.
Right.
So obviously, we're going to need some, you know, teaching. And I met today with one of the people who said they will help us out to kind of create, you know, I kind of told them what we have for goal. You know, we want to introduce Eastern European liquor. We don't want to do like a simple, like everybody else, like same liquor and all that stuff. We want to do something different. Like we, since we're a tea house, we want to incorporate a lot of tea into like alcohol cocktails and stuff like that. So obviously, we want to make a destination here. It's not like just for neighbors, but for people from around, from Westfield.
Is it breakfast, lunch, dinner?
Yeah, we have a long hours and I don't know how it's going to be following up because this is a little bit different town. Like in West Springfield, we open seven AM and close eleven PM.
Wow.
And even Friday and Saturday, we're till one AM. And what we notice why we have such a long hours is just because a lot of time youth, they, especially Christian youth from Westfield, they just don't know where to go. And a lot of times, we just come and hang out. We have a piano, we have loud music and just pull tables together, sit and talk and since we, we have no alcohol in West Springfield, it's another kind of point, you know? We, we don't like to be McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts. Our place kind of fell in the spot where they just catch up. Or if they hungry, sometimes we stay at the beach late and on the way home, they hungry, they want to eat. It's another destination. There, we're very close to the neighbors. We've never had any complaints about noise, nothing like that. So it's not that public who comes and makes loud noises and yelling and screaming. Occasionally have, you know, idiots, I'm sorry.
But we got them all, yeah.
Yeah, you know, occasionally, but it's barely, it's not like they are customers, you know? Somebody come in and, you know, pull a knife in the parking lot or something like that. It's like, where that came from, you know? So but most of them, it's not, this is not who we're targeting to have as customers, you know? But hope it's going to be a nice destination. We, you know, especially for the summertime, we have a very nice porch in the back. Nice view, you know, just to sit, enjoy, talk and, you know, listen to music, whatever, whatever people do. A lot of time, people just want to talk. And it's not, if it's loud music, you cannot do that. It's like, you know, some places, they do bands. We don't do bands. We do background music, glad background music. We even tried to do it one time in West Springfield, like a TV show, almost like Jay Leno type of thing. Like, you know, where you have a lot of famous people in the world and people don't even know about that. Like we have the guy in Agarom, he's in the Book of Hennes, the youngest artist in the world. Nobody even knew about him until we started digging, people writing books and, you know, we've been working with West Springfield High School. They've been kind of, you know, helpful. It's, it's one year we did that. Later, we find out too difficult because I'm running a business. I'm top of that, I have to invite people and camera crew and it's not one man's show. It has to be somehow separately. We did that for like maybe half a year or something like that. I mean, just, it's too much. But, you know, like somehow people just find out about us and we still have a lot of good followers and stuff like that. Even now, when we hire, we tell people, it's not just about the food, the atmosphere, you know? We want to be friendly and, you know, we don't care about religion, race, sexual orientation. We don't care. It's food.
We're good, buddy.
Food that anybody can eat, you know, like have like any types of food. We even like, we don't have even catering menu because of that. Because some people eat pork, some people don't. Some people eat beef, some people don't. We just sit down and talk. What do you want, you know? What, what kind of food do you, you're looking to have? Because we do weddings, we've done weddings for four hundred people and we're not trying to do that. It's a lot of work, you know? But occasionally, if no people, we put together and, you know, do stuff like that. And this is not our main business. Our main business is just to run like everyday operations.
West Side is going to stay open?
Oh, yeah. We, we own Yerba Building too. We're not planning to expand too much. What we notice, when you have few locations, it's a little bit for people easy to kind of go in, you know? Like when you have one location, it's like you can be hidden. When you have multiple, this is what helped us a lot when we started going through festivals, like even Grainville, that Harvest Festival. We went a couple of times, we noticed a lot of people started coming from that area. You know, because they tried. It's not just about see and touch, it's just about trying and, oh, yeah, I like it. Hey, great, you know? So we're not trying to expand anymore. Now we're going to be trying to more work on the idea of growing, like same thing like with menu. For example, we don't, we, we believe in not to have same menu for hundred years.
Right.
It's almost like every year to year, we're changing something. So people come and they, yeah, people come and say, hey, something new, hey, something new. It doesn't matter which direction. It's like live music or maybe something different on the food. Maybe something different of a interior, something like that, you know? So we can, we all about like keeping alive and doing something.
Well, it looks great. You cleaned it up, you painted and.
Yeah, it's still a lot more work to do.
Oh, there is.
Now we just want to open the doors. We're talking about possibly getting something done with the yard and adding some stuff. But obviously, before we're going to do that, we're going to go for each, you know, like place needed to be visited, building department, health department, just to find out because it's a wet land, what we can do, what we cannot do. We see a lot of people, even now, we bring dogs and walking.
Oh, the back of that's been dogs forever, yes.
Yeah, it's great. We're, we're not against it. I mean, even if it's our property now, I'm all for it. Let them do that. This is why we've been talking possibly maybe.
As long as they have your coffee in their hand, right?
No, it's okay. You know what we notice? It's healthy competition is good.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, if we have neighbors, we have West Springfield, Charlie Diner right across the street. They come to us and borrow something. Hey, I need boxes to go. You're welcome, you know? It's healthy competition, it's normal. If we're going to go and cut his wire, he's, you ought to go. Hey, this is, this is why I say like, hey, this is not right, you know?
Yeah.
But healthy, we look at them, we look at the prices, what they sell, hey, maybe we can do better. Not hurt them, but, you know, compete in a reasonable way, you know, maybe something different. Because another thing which we notice, it's kind of tough, especially when you introduce something new, something different. Not everybody willing to jump in and try it. So it takes time. This is what, like even to that day, we, we have, we've been nine years and we're busy, but nobody considers us as a breakfast place.
No, I would never have thought that.
Yeah.
That's why I asked for hours.
Maybe a name, maybe something. But we have all the breakfast items and stuff like that. But what we notice, like a lot of breakfast places filled up at eight, I'm sorry, seven, eight o'clock. We filled up more like nine, ten. It's a different crowd, totally different people. We're still happy, we're good. People are still coming, people still visit. It's good as long as we in that circle of visit, visitation places and we're fine.
Is there any questions?
No, I, I was just going to remark that we suddenly in the last couple of years have been blessed restaurants and diversity of restaurants in our town.
Yeah.
And, you know, glad to have you here and, you know, looking forward to having that place being utilized again. Because, and I think a, a destination place is ideal because it hasn't really excelled as a just a regular old restaurant, if you will. It's kind of in an interesting spots. People are going to be coming there, you know, versus people driving by, oh, we'll pull in and eat, I think. So I think you're going to be, I think you're in a great spot.
And with your help. I mean, if anything, like, you know, anything, anywhere we can participate, just let us know and.
Oh, we'll be reaching out to you.
Oh, yeah.
Don't worry about that. It's our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary next year. So we're going to be reaching out to you. We have the Chairman of the Economic Development Commission, Mike McMahon, sitting right there.
You have a very nice website, Facebook page. My wife and a whole bunch of her friends love your place in West Brooklyn. I've never been there.
Mr. Dede, do you have anything?
No, his hours are fine, right? I don't think we do anything with hours.
Yeah, if any problems, just let us know. For the restaurant part, unless it may be a separate.
Completely understand.
Okay.
And then maybe educate him on the entertainment side and stuff as we move forward.
When, right, when we get to the alcohol thing, like you said, it'll be an educational process.
Yeah.
But we'll go over everything and make sure you fully understand it.
We're ready to learn.
Okay.
I mean, anything.
But as far as this, I don't think we have a problem. So I need a motion?
No, is he going to want to? Doug's question is, does he want to have entertainment before he actually deals with the liquor part later?
We would like to have, like we have in West Springfield now. We have every Thursday and Saturday, we have a piano, we have a piano player and occasionally we have a guy, he's a, no, he, I forgot what he's playing.
Right, that's live entertainment.
Yeah, live, but it's a background music.
Right, right, it's not, it's not a concert.
So it's still live entertainment, but not a jukebox, not a jukebox or anything. Your TVs, you got TVs on the walls?
We have TVs, yeah.
Two box radio, TV and live music is one entity.
But is that under the alcohol license or is that separate?
It's under the entertainment.
Totally separate, okay.
Do we have to notify neighbors for that?
No, not entertainment.
So then we, can we give him that tonight?
You don't even have a button on the engagement of this.
The only thing is, with most of the liquor establishments, you know, any outside music, entertainment?
Can you tell his name?
No, outside.
Okay.
I think you could approve this and then live entertainment inside.
Okay.
We want to have inside open.
Okay.
I don't want to.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
All right.
What was the motion?
So what are we approving?
We're approving commodicular and we're also approving entertainment for inside.
Okay, I need hours of operation and I need what kind of entertainment? There's a bunch of different categories.
So, so we'll approve.
It's two box radio, TV and live music is one. DJ is another. There's.
So we got TV.
Yeah.
Two box radio, TV.
And we have live music.
It's one entity.
I know, he said there's no jukebox.
It's.
That's fine, it's still one license.
One, okay. And the live.
So two box, radio, TV, live music.
Yeah.
That's on.
Any hours?
DJ?
No.
Bands?
No.
Are you going to be open on Sunday?
Yeah, we're going to be.
Okay, so that's a different license.
I apologize for interrupting. Sometimes we have school kids reaching out to us. They want to play, especially teachers and stuff like that. And we're always welcome. So it's followed with the same background music.
Under live music.
But we just like, you know, try to do it and we're still paying for that and, you know.
And as far as the live music, you probably wouldn't be doing that at seven o'clock in the morning. You'd probably be at, in the evening.
Yeah, usually we, we do flexible for them. It's between six and nine, they choose a time to play two hours. So let's say six thirty to eight thirty, because we're paying them for that.
Yeah.
And plus give them some food. So we at least want a two hours of music.
You don't need to stipulate the hours. You just have to make sure they are done outside at ten.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, there you go.
So that, so that patio can have no music after ten P M.
Yeah.
Right. Can't you just put down no outside entertainment segment?
I don't know if you're approving outside or not outside.
He said no.
He said he doesn't do it.
Only thing, since it follow with TV and everything, we thought if patio, we can have a little speaker on the patio which broadcast. We can shut it off by ten or something like that.
Basically, the TV is if you have it so that the patrons can see it.
Yeah.
But you're just talking about a speaker out there with background music.
Yeah, background music.
It's gonna be under this one part of the license.
And we can end it at this panel, whatever.
So we'll just approve the motion or approve the chair, do you wanna just prove the chair to sign it and then she can type that out after the week?
He can have right now, two box radio, TV and live music.
Okay.
Okay.
Inside.
Right.
Yeah.
I still have to pay for it, all right?
Oh yeah, lots of money, lots of money, welcome, welcome to Southwick.
All right, so we have a motion made in second, I think we have a clear understanding. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we'll sign it then.
And how many days do you need to get that all figured out?
Well, I at least need some paperwork with this corporation, LLC running out, who's the manager?
Give all your, all your information and then she'll get the final.
When do you plan on filing for the, the paperwork for the liquor license?
On the road.
Yeah, we, I talked to Valora today, they still finalizing the closing.
I'll tell you what, I have a packet that you can fill out.
Okay.
Okay, and that'll give me all the information that you, that I need to do this license, or to do the entertainment license.
I don't know how that goes, what, up to what, but.
It's a general information packet that I would need anyway, would give you anyway.
So you just fill out the best you can.
Yeah, that way I know if it's a corporation, if it's an LLC, I don't know any of that now, so, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
And how much is the entertainment license?
It's gonna be fifty dollars to the state for Sunday.
Yeah.
Fifty dollars to us for Sunday.
Okay.
Um, twenty-five dollars for two box radio, TV, weekdays, so.
So we got one twenty-five so far?
Yeah, but different checks.
Okay.
Okay, cause I need.
So bring a couple of checks with you.
All right, I will.
Thank you.
So tomorrow?
I'm gonna need the information and then time to process it.
So information tomorrow and a couple of days, the rest is already.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay?
All right, we thank you very much.
Well said, thank you.
Welcome to town, look forward to having you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, reach out to that gentleman if you need assistance.
Thank you.
So what's all the bars and restaurants in town? I heard it June fourth and you bought the property in the eighteenth, so I didn't know you were coming.
Thank you.
All right, then we're gonna move right along to uh Tyne Barn and Randy and Stormwater Management.
Make sure it gets on the front page, hold, okay?
All right, so.
All right.
All right, movie time.
Movie time.
So as you know, we've been, we're in the midst of this multi-year.
Yes, sir.
Complex.
I can't wait.
Yes, we are, buddy, oh.
They have wholeheartedly.
You got some kettle casser?
All that, all that, we tortured him for years on this and he finally gave him twenty bucks and here we are.
This is it, this is your twenty dollar show.
It's my twenty dollar show.
So, so one of the, so we had to develop this, a notice and, notice of intent and a stormwater management plan. Which kind of like, it's kind of like the bible of what are we doing, when are we doing it, how are we doing it?
Absolutely.
And, and one of the components of the permit is to engage the public in the development of that plan. That's why we're here today to meet with you.
And the public.
With the public, here's our plan. So we have Tracy in Danzig, in Tyne Barn, who you may have seen in the past.
We've met.
Those are two grumpy men from the Muppets, those are two grumpy guys up on the stage.
Statler and Waldorf.
Statler and Waldorf.
So Tracy's gonna go through a presentation.
And we'll try and do this quick.
Gotta stay away.
Um, so as Randy had mentioned, the purpose is to provide an update on what Southwick is doing with respect to stormwater management. Discuss the requirements of the MS four permit and the notice of intent and the stormwater management plan. And get any feedback that you happen to have. Um, so, starting with the basics, what is stormwater? So that's anything that falls um on the grounds uh from rain or snow melt events that has potential to pick up pollutants. The reason EPA is concerned with stormwater is that there's been a number of studies that link an increase in pervious surface to a decrease in water quality. So EPA spent, you know, the eighties and nineties kind of addressing the point source discharges from our industries. And now they're looking at non-point sources and going after stormwater. And that's where Southwick falls in. So uh there, you're regulated under the MS four program, which is the municipal separate storm sewer system. And you've been under this program since two thousand and three. That's when it first came out, um, it's jointly administered by EPA and MasD E P. And there are two hundred and sixty municipalities who are covered under this, so there's a lot.
How many municipalities?
Two hundred and sixty um that have urbanized areas in them.
Urbanized, in Massachusetts. So the other ninety in the state, they don't, they're not under any?
They're not under any.
That is correct.
Like Bramble, Tolland, they don't, they're.
Yeah, they're the type, they're smaller communities.
Well, we can start giving Bramble some land back, we can give some to Connecticut, we can make that.
Maybe we oughta let Upfield back in.
So, this, this map here shows the urbanized areas, so you can see, you know, the areas that are pretty hot. Um, and you know, not all of Southwick is in an urbanized area.
Oh, so, okay, then that'll be a question.
Okay.
Well, after we have our meeting with the, with uh.
But, but it's, you know, so there's the map, you have um, what is that?
That's not cool.
Norris Road and um.
Oh, look at that.
Norris Loomis, thank you, thank you, yep, and then around the ponds.
So I'll point out that most of our drainage system is in that area, it's all urbanized area, so it's not like.
Uh, you knew, you knew what my, you knew what my question was gonna be, you know?
Wow.
So.
We give Connecticut back that, okay, go ahead.
And he did, it's our color.
Yeah, we just give them the river, we give them the water back, we're way ahead of the game.
So there are six minimum control standards that EPA requires the town to have best management practices to address. So the first two are related to public education and public participation. Um, then this uh, the third item is what EPA seems to be focused on most, the illicit discharge detection and elimination program. And as we get into that, that's, that's the one that has probably the most um time and money associated with it. Because that addresses the outfalls and sampling. And then there's, you know, having requirements for managing construction site stormwater controls. So that's having erosion controls um available, having, making sure that new developments have proper stormwater controls in place. And then good housekeeping and pollution prevention for municipal practices. And finally, um, there's a requirement to meet total maximum daily loads for waterways that have those or that are impaired. And we'll get into that um towards the end. So like I said, you guys have been working on this since two thousand and three. There's educational materials that are up on the town website. The town's part of the Connecticut River Stormwater Committee that's run by P B P C. So there's a lot of educational materials and other support that comes through that program. Um, public participation events have been including, you know, cleanup events, coordination with the lake management committee. Um, and, and just in water quality monitoring. So there's a lot of public participation that actually has kind of gelled around the pond specifically. Stormwater outfalls have been mapped, you have that in G I S. And uh you've developed the stormwater bylaws under the two thousand and three permit. So there's the regulatory and legal, you know, hooks that you needed to have in place under two thousand and three. And those will be part of the basis for moving forward. A notice of intent was required to be submitted, um, well, actually taking a step back. So the permit came out in two thousand and sixteen, was supposed to become effective in two thousand and seventeen. You probably remember the story, at the last minute EPA stayed the permit, so it didn't become effective until July first of two thousand and eighteen. Um, at that point, a notice of intent was required to submit it, be submitted by um October first. Southwick submitted um the notice of intent and then revised it more recently uh at the end of May. It is, uh, and then as part of the, one of the other requirements, um, the stormwater management uh plan need to be finalized by July first. You have that in hand, um, so there's a draft that is um prepared. And that stormwater management plan identifies all the activities that Southwick has done to date. And identifies what best management practices Southwick will be doing over the course of the next permit term. So just um going through the public, some, some of the specific requirements. So in two thousand and three EPA said, we have these six minimum control measures. You communities tell us how you're going to meet them, what are the best management practices you're going to use? And this time around, EPA said, you communities, this is what we're telling you, you have to do in order to meet it. And I think you guys have had some of, you know, are, are familiar with some of those discussions. But here are some of the requirements with respect to public education and outreach. There's annual timed messages that are required to go to residences and businesses. Um, and then there are two messages over the permit term to developers and industrial facilities. So to developers talking about, you know, construction um practices. And again, Connecticut River Stormwater Committee, I think is a good um source of the public education information. They're preparing materials, doing P S As and gathering some of the, the data that will need to be submitted to EPA eventually. With respect to public involvement and participation, this is one of the reasons we're having the meeting today. Um, one requirement is to have an um, the notice of intent and the stormwater management plan available for people to review. And also to have a public meeting to, you know, allow um for questions. And so that's part of today, or that's in part what today is. The final notice, notice of intent is up on EPA's website, the thirty day comment period. Um, I think we're still like another week or so into it. And then we expect the authorization from EPA shortly thereafter. So the illicit discharge detection and elimination program requires that you identify sanitary sewer overflows. Which really isn't a problem here, cause you have a very new system. Um, but updates the map of the stormwater system, so instead of just having the outfalls mapped, have everything, catch basins, pipes. And Southwick has done a good job of, you know, having a lot of that information already um in place. And then having a written program for how Southwick will identify and eliminate illicit discharges to the stormwater system. So part of this includes um identifying and ranking all of the outfalls based on what's called system vulnerability factors, you know, factors that EPA has specifically um identified. And so that sets up your prioritization, so that you have a better way of, you know, using your time and, and money. Uh, so then there's catchment delineation and investigations that go along with that and the dry and wet weather sampling. So all outfalls need to be, all outfalls within that urbanized area need to be reviewed. Um, and sampled if there's a dry weather flow in the first three years of the permit. So the permit started um January first, sorry, July first of two thousand and eighteen. So you have until, you know, July first of two thousand and twenty-one to finish that. Under the uh minimum control standards for four and five, this is the stormwater management and new development and redevelopment. There may be um slight tweaks to the existing stormwater bylaws to just incorporate some additional language that EPA has required as part of the new permit. Um, there's some changes to uh the, the amount of or how um stormwater needs to be treated in impaired water areas. And um it changes, the redevelopment requirements are different in the MS four permit than they are in the MasD E P stormwater standards that we've been running with for the past few decades. So there's a little, um, we're not quite sure if D E P is gonna change or if eventually some lawsuits going through, if that changes for EPA. But one of the other requirements is to take a look at the town's regulations subdivision and zoning to see if there's opportunities for um incorporating low impact development into, into the bylaws. And this comes up oftentimes in subdivisions where, you know, for a while their subdivision road requirements um for paved surfaces got wider. So you had, you know, your, your bigger street, or the streets that took more traffic were narrower than some of the side streets. Um, because of, you know, the way our subdivision rules and regs have gone. So that might be an opportunity to take a look and see if there's a way to, you know, minimize pavement for, or impervious surfaces for new developments. As part of this um standard, it also looks at, it's requiring municipalities to look at opportunities to retrofit existing stormwater systems to do a better job of treatment. So you know, at, at facilities, if you're doing facility upgrades, it's an opportunity to um install some better stormwater best management practices to address impervious surface runoff. And as part of the regulatory assessment, it's also looking at green infrastructure. There are opportunities to do, you know, back to country drainage, um, or uh using uh impervious pavers, or sorry, pervious pavers and a rain garden, so you know, are there opportunities to um encourage developments to incorporate that? With respect to good housekeeping, that really is um regarding municipal practices and looking at um what are best management practices that you can do to minimize the municipal um impact to stormwater runoff. So there's a requirement to develop an operation and maintenance program for municipal facilities um to look at municipal infrastructure O and M procedures. And this includes catch basin cleaning and street sweeping requirements as well as, and um and winter road maintenance, which we'll get to in a, in a second. As well as making sure that existing best management practices that are on municipal properties are properly operated and maintained. So catch basins on, you know, here at the town hall are cleaned out. Any detention basins have, are being maintained as per their um requirements, so that they continue to function as designed. With respect to winter road maintenance, um, this looks at procedures for use and storage of salt and sand. You guys now have a great new facility for, for storing um salt and sand. But EPA is looking to see if there's opportunities to minimize use of salts. Um, there's also a requirement to prepare and implement stormwater pollution prevention plans. So those are plans that are site specific. Um, so like the DPW facility would require one where you look at what's, um, what are the potential exposures for stormwater? For stormwater and are there opportunities to manage that better to minimize impacts to the, to the environment? And in Southwick, the only T M D L that um you need to worry about is the T M D L that everybody in Western Mass um is privy to. So the Long Island Sound nitrogen T M D L includes the entirety of the Connecticut River watershed. So all of us here in Western Mass are subject to, all the communities here in Western Mass are subject to the Long Island Sound T M D L. And this um essentially the requirements are to have increased public education and outreach. So when I mentioned that there are annual messages, um timed annual messages to residences. If we weren't in um the Long Island Sound T M D L, you'd only have to do two messages to residents over the course of the five years. Now you have to do three messages to residents and businesses every year and at certain times. There's the requirement to amend a stormwater bylaw to incorporate optimization for nitrogen removal, using slow release fertilizers. Um, the requirement is upped for street, um, sweeping streets from annually to twice annually. And uh in some of the latter years, there's a requirement to develop a nitrogen source identification report. So identifying where some sources within town um might be generating nitrogen, so that there's an opportunity to um identify ways to remove nitrogen from the system. So the quick summary, I mean, right now you're meeting the MS four requirements, there's a lot of work that has to be done. Um, we're just finishing or have just finished permit year one. But there's a lot of additional requirements that need to be done, you know, from here on out. Um, it is a, supposed to be a five-year permit, but there are compliance requirements that extend to ten years. And that includes some of the um sampling requirements. It's a way of EPA giving communities a bit more time to meet those requirements, but just recognize that this is an ongoing program. You know, the, the changes that we saw from the two thousand and three permit to the two thousand and sixteen permit were pretty significant. And do have, you know, significant um implications on, you know, budget and staff time to, to meet the requirements.
That two thousand and three permit, by the way, was valid through two thousand and sixteen, till this one started. That 2003 permit, by the way, was valid through 2016, till this one started. I mean, that five-year permit extended, was extended and was extended, so just a high, you know.
Until June 30th, 2018.
Great.
So.
So 15 years worth of five-year permit.
Yep. So that's all that I have. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments.
Just a general comment because we've brought this up before about using pervious surfaces in New England where the worst flows from stormwater, the worst ones that do the most, raise the most havoc are in the spring when the ground's still frozen. And things like pervious pavers don't work until the ground thaws. And, and, you know, they just don't work.
So you're saying in New England, that's not a solution?
It's not a great solution, not where you're going.
Whereas in other parts of the country, it may be fun.
Right. There's a lot of things that are like that where it's great down south where you don't have frozen ground. But you take it up here and it doesn't work.
I could just see those things popping up and plows hitting them.
Rain gardens are another one that are a great idea.
Everything for us is about being plowable.
Rain gardens are a great idea, but you gotta find somebody that's gonna maintain it. Because it's a lot of hours.
And maybe, I mean, for some of those, they're not really good for our scale. You know, they might be better for smaller residential properties, but not really.
Yeah, where the owner really truly owns it.
Right.
How many other communities is Titan Bottom working with?
Dozens.
Dozens?
Yeah.
And what's your general opinion of where these other communities are at?
It's a little bit across the board. So some communities are, you know, can really jump out ahead.
Larger communities with more resources?
That helps. Yep. You know, and some communities are still, are, you know, playing a little bit more catch-up. So it, it does kind of run, run the gamut.
So we don't have to test the, any catch basins outside of the area?
Yeah, anything that's outside that urbanized area.
Which is a handful.
It's still a handful. I'll take it.
Right.
Unfortunately. You only need 10 fingers to count them.
But do you keep, but you keep them, you keep them as an infrastructure inventory somewhere?
It's still a good practice.
It's still an inventory of infrastructure somewhere.
Because you know the next permit's gonna have it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Well, at least have it, have it inventory of where the infrastructure is, even if you're not doing the testing.
Right. The mapping part will come part of the whole town. But these other tasks, the follow-up tasks, will focus just on the MS4 areas.
Okay.
And you already have someone helping you this summer and you're in the middle of recruiting the coordinator?
Yes, we have Connor who started our summer intern and he's working on the mapping. That's a daily task of his. And then we also have a couple of applications for a stormwater coordinator, which we talked about a few months ago. So I'm reviewing those and I'm hoping to bring them in soon for an interview.
Yeah, we should interview them and get somebody in.
Hey, do we keep track of the tonnage that we take off the streets when we do our street sweeping?
Absolutely.
Yes, we do.
So that should have gone way down when we stopped using sand, right?
Yep. And I have, I keep track of actually what we, what we apply as well. So I apply all the salt and sand that we use each year. I keep track of that. And that has, that has gone down the last few years, the amount of salt. And we, now we're down to basically no sand.
I just, you know, now there's a requirement to sweep the streets twice a year, but we're not putting the material down like we used to be putting down.
Right.
Those resources could be better.
Yeah, we still don't do it twice a year. We only do it once.
Yeah, but we have a requirement in the permit.
It's common.
I'm just saying that you could better deploy that resource, money to something else. When you change your practice to stop putting it down in the first place so you don't have to go sweep it up later. But it also, also is, it gets there from runoff from new construction and things like that.
Or budding properties.
Or budding properties and roads. Right, right.
All the upgrading and parcels of poor and stuff on the roads every day.
Mowing and dumping crap into the roads.
No, I understand that, but I mean, you know, that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you.
What's the state's responsibility on College Highway?
Yeah, state roads.
So.
I haven't seen their form yet.
I mean, are they testing their catch basins? Are they sweeping twice a year? Are they doing anything to comply with this?
They are subject, they, I mean, they are subject to the permit.
Better write a letter, Russ.
There we go.
Russ is meeting, Russ was already meeting.
They have a separate permit? Is that correct, Tracy?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, they're not doing very good. I think we're way ahead of the state on this one.
I think they are still subject, and I have not seen their permit, but I think they are still subject to the majority of the provisions.
And they're way behind Southwick.
That's good, Russ, so you can ask the PD guy in front of the EPA guy why he's not complying with the other.
Right. You're yelling at me? What about the state?
Yeah.
I mean, that's our biggest.
They don't sweep them, they don't track them out.
That's the biggest pollutant in, in, that would, I would think in the town of Southwood would be College Highway.
Yeah.
Six and a half miles.
That's the least done.
Right. I mean, we saw what help they gave us, I'm getting off topic now, in the storm of 2011, when they abandoned us and told us, well, that's your road now.
Right. We're in Belcher Town.
Right. We're in Belcher Town. College Highway is now your responsibility. Take care of it. So.
Interesting phone.
Right, right.
I can imagine.
When you touch it, they yell at you.
I, no, you're not, no, how to get their attention? You tell them you're closing the border.
That's what we did.
Then you get their attention.
We got their attention real fast when we did that. Because Granby was on the phone too, going, what? You're gonna do what?
We're gonna close the border.
We're closing the border. We got their attention. But I, anyways, what advice would you give us? What advice? I mean, you must go to other hearings.
You know, so you have, you have your new notice of intent. And, you know, EPA has identified, you know, this is what we are requiring and when. And that's part of their general permit. So that's, that's why you had to go through the process of revising the notice of intent because that needs to match what their general permit is. You know, I would say try and, you're gonna have to do enough to be able to straight-face say you're working to meet the requirements, you know, to keep yourself out of trouble.
Straight face, Russ.
Oh, boy.
We're there.
Six figures.
Randy's been saying that possibly.
Of course.
We started that six figures.
Right.
Yeah.
What, what we've, what you've seen Randy do so far and what you know we're doing so far, do you think that, where are we? Would you guess? You know, are we way at the bottom, in the middle?
Right in the middle, Russ. We're right in the middle.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say you're a bit in the middle. I think you guys started off with a really strong program, you know, from the work that you guys did in 2003 or, or, you know, before.
From there on.
Yeah.
Our maintenance that we did.
But there are things, I would say, like, do the simple things. Like, make sure all of your documents are in place. There's the illicit discharge plan that needs to happen. There's the operation and maintenance plan, the SWIP. All of those are things that are easy for EPA to come in and say, do you have it? And if you don't, that's an easy check for them.
Right.
You know, it's, and then when it comes to like the sampling, it's, you know, it's resources. Unfortunately, you know, that's, that takes time and field effort to have people go out.
And lab money.
And lab money, exactly, to, to run the samples, so.
I can't believe they don't have a regional approach to the sampling, you know, to cut the cost then, you know.
The stuff we've done so far is kind of like getting your ducks in order, right? Right? And, and kind of like getting the, the overall concept, you know, things that other communities are also doing, kind of in the same boat we are. So that's where the stormwater committee really helps me. Because we're all in the same boat. But now we're at a point where we're kind of focusing on each individual community. And obviously, we're different than Aglo and Westfield. So now, now that's, we're at the point where we need our own resources to focus on our town, identify what we need to do to meet the permit.
And the other thing is, at the end of September, you're gonna have to submit an annual report into EPA. And EPA has a pretty substantial list of supporting documents that they want to be included in that annual report. So I don't know what resources they have to actually take a look through, 260 annual reports and all that information and data. But that's the easy thing for them to say, we asked you to send this to us. If we don't have it, you know, that, that's an easy thing to paint. So by the time you're doing like your annual report, it's good to make sure you go through. And there's, there's checklists for what are required for permit year one. And just to make sure that those are, you know, at least you, you've got something in the book for.
It's like R and B, the stuff will be put in the mailroom and staffed.
You're right.
Because they don't have the staff.
Nobody's gonna put it in the computer.
I mean, it's taken them, you know, Southwick is not the only authorization that's, you know, still out there. You know, they've, they've, well, I guess it's nine months that, you know, they've been going through all the notices of intent that have been submitted. And, you know, they're still rolling out authorization. So it's, it's taken them a while to, to go through that. But on the other hand, you don't want to be one of those communities that they choose as a poster child.
Oh, absolutely not, you know. That is not our intent at all. Our intent is to comply fully with everything that they've requested.
A bridge to solid.
Well, it's a public hearing. Is there any comments from the public? That was Dick Grinnell's that spoke earlier, so we'll put that him down. And we have Mike McMahon, economic development, spoke. David, do you want to say anything about water?
I'm good.
Okay, water, he says water's good. Okay, put David Sutton down as water.
Tastes good, he said.
Hope you're a resident of Southwick. Your water good?
My water's delicious.
All right, what, Hope says water's delicious. All right. Randy, do you want to sum it up or?
No, I think we, so we talked about it all here.
Okay. We thank you as usual.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Right. All right, stormwater management, Carl's note. Here's the stormwater management plan for the permit.
Yeah, this is what Randy gave us to come to the meeting.
Okay, signed on page one.
There'll be a quiz.
Does he have to sign it there?
Yeah, they all need to sign it.
Do we need to take any vote? Or just, we're just signing that we?
No, just why?
That we're submitting this stormwater plan?
We'll take a vote. Can't hurt.
Okay. Monglin, that we, a vote that we're submitting this stormwater management program for Southwick, Massachusetts?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I believe we gotta sign this in black ink. What's this revision?
That's if we change something later.
Exactly. This is meant to be a working document.
So sign that too?
No, no.
No, leave that alone.
Just on the top section. If it changes, we'll have to re-sign it.
It might be signed a few times.
Randy, can you get this tomorrow from her or do you need it tonight?
So actually, this document just stays here. It doesn't need to be submitted to EPA or DPA.
So you can get it tomorrow from her.
On file. If anybody in the public wants to review it, it should be available.
You can put it online if you want it. You can put it online. We'll give it to you tomorrow.
All right, then, we're back. We're back. Here we go. Acknowledged payables warrant number 1933B dated 6/26/19 and the amount of $218,095.97. Acknowledged payables warrant number 2001B dated 7/1/19 and the amount of $2,211,586.49. Acknowledged payroll warrant number 2001 dated 7/9/19 and the amount of $292,345.3. I need a motion on the minutes of 6:25:19.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Are there any executive meeting?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Then we're on to sewer abatement for Heather Cabral?
Cabral.
Cabral at 42 Southwood Drive and the amount of $73. I need a motion.
Is there, I hate to ask, is there any background or?
The water, the water.
It says here.
Because what happened, the Water Commission had already done the water abatement. So this is your prorated shift of sewer part.
Right. A water leak unsuccessful attempt at fixing herself resulting in a billing for a long weekend. In the, uh, second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as sewer commissioners, we're, Mr. Monglin made that motion, Mr. Dede seconded it. And we take a vote as sewer commissioners. And I'll pass you the sacred book. All right. Authorizing the posting for the position of assistant library director. As you know, we had a resignation of Jacqueline Hart.
She's going to West Springfield.
She's going to West Springfield. But she has said she would be willing to help us on evenings or during the weekend hours when available to help complete any state reports that are necessary. Is that correct?
You got my email and stuff?
Yeah, there's some state reports we have to do this month, there's other reports in October.
Okay. Now, it's Mike McMahon speaking as a library trustee. All right, so, need a motion to post?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
And I would like to, I've worked with Mike to finalize what that language would be.
Absolutely.
Do we have to take any action on the resignation of Jacqueline Hart or no? Okay. All right, then we, next thing here is a one-day liquor license, parade permit, entertainment license. So we need a liquor license, a parade permit, entertainment license for an event, for a one-call-away event at Wally Park on 7/20/19. And we have Mr. Sutton, who's done an outstanding job in starting this and promoting it and putting it on. And what year is this, Mr. Sutton?
Fourth annual.
Fourth annual. Would you like to give us a rundown on this year's plan?
The short version.
To get through it, please.
Yeah.
There you go.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you stopping in. Don't let the door hit you.
So what do you need for hours for the liquor sales, though?
Um, that would probably be from, what was it? 10 to 10?
Well, I thought I saw eight to 10. I'm hoping, that's not what I saw.
Eight to 10.
That's what he filled out.
8:00 AM.
You want booze at 8:00 AM?
No, but I just figured.
We're not getting it.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, wait. I add the hours for the, I add the hours.
I guess.
I add the hours for delivery, right on the license.
Oh, is that what that is? Eight to 10 is for delivery?
No, he asked for eight to 10 for liquor.
That's fine, thank you. What time would you like to serve, sir?
We're not serving any beer till noon.
Just go by his application.
She's not serving any beer till noon, folks.
All right.
There you go.
We will put that on the license.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to talk about the parade?
The parade, talked it over with all the powers that be so far and everybody's.
Oh, he talks to you, Russ?
Okay, I'm sorry, the, on the first responder portion.
Well, there you go. Thank you. I, sure.
If you haven't got it already, you, you do know you have an open invitation to join this event, right?
Well, you talked to the powers that be, Russ, so it didn't trickle down to us yet.
This is yes. Well, I meant on the responders.
I think tonight was his official.
Oh, is that it?
Yes, that's why he's here.
That's why he's here.
We gotta check our calendars.
He's been sitting here for an hour waiting to invite us.
I, I dozed off during that thing. I was wondering if I can get a copy and go over it again. I'll get you a copy. Don't you dare.
Where'd you get the book?
I think planning board should read it.
So we have the parade, we have the event, and we got fireworks that night.
Yeah.
It's one great day.
And entertainment, we got bands.
King Country and, and.
And what time does this all end?
Um, well, that's to be determined because we had an interesting turn of events yesterday while I was working. I got a phone call from a Amy Starr. She was doing a, a 5K to, you've heard of this?
I, I work with her sister and I know all of them.
Is it a good, it's a good thing, right?
Well, not that the way their event ended up.
No, they, they, for some reason, they lost their venue.
For the same weekend?
Mm-hmm.
In town?
Yep, so they called up to offer me what they had already paid for. They have a 40 by 40 tent and a stage. And there was a few other things that they'd like to donate to the event. And I said, well, we're very gracious on that and I thank you. I said, but let me ask you a question. What happened? So they, they fill me on what, what had happened. And apparently, they have an off-site place that they're meeting to do this 5K. And then they were gonna go to this venue and they were going to have the, after celebration, the gathering meal, whatever they were gonna do there. Um, that unfortunately didn't go through. So while I was sitting here, there was another meeting going on at the West Springfield Library for my foundation, where she was present. I talked with her, I said, well, let's get back to the part where you got shut down. I says, what you're doing and what you want to do is interesting. I says, what I'd like to do is get together with you and talk about what it is you lost and see if we can't put it back on the venue. So at this point, they're still gonna run the 5K at their point and then they're gonna come back and join me at the, at the event at 4:30. So they'll bring their folks in and we'll feed them the barbecue and let them listen to music there and, and all that. Because I couldn't, I couldn't see her taking that financial hit.
No.
And, and it's a great organization, you know, they're doing it to promote, to help veterans. And so we had negotiations and we invited them to join us. She accepted. And so we saved the event and it'll be a great filler between when we wind down at the four o'clock, it's 4:30ish mark, into when the fireworks begin. And I think it's tremendous. And I talked to her briefly about extending the invitation for next year and she loved the idea. And that they would work around that with their promoter to make it so that would be the.
Part of the 250th celebration.
Exactly, because, you know, it's such a major year for our town.
That's right.
And to be able to run through it would be just amazing. With your permission, of course.
Right, thank you.
At that point, I'll come before you and beg.
So the, after fireworks, it's pretty much everything's done.
We're cleaning up, shutting down, putting things away. Cause at, at the 4:30 mark, we're basically closing everything down except food and, and, and beer. Um, and then, you know, some lighting and some chairs and tables will still be there. So people who come in to, uh, to enjoy the fireworks, we provide, make sure there's lighting. We, we give the kids free hot dogs, whatever, whatever we have left over, we give to the kids.
Where they shoot off the fireworks, down the paths?
Yeah. It fills up nicely.
I open up the gates in between Wally Park and Motocross.
Yep.
Place packed last year.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
And we keep a, we keep an eye on everything that's going on and make sure everybody's okay. We still have our EMT there. Yep.
Do you have an officer of your thing?
Yeah, we have like 30 of them.
No, but do you have a town?
No, they're not gonna require me to have one unless needed. And they'll, they're gonna stop in periodic and, and, um, they're gonna do drive-throughs and to make sure everything's going smooth. And we will have a, a police radio onsite at all times issued to Todd Mungram, we see, one of the instructors at the Police Academy. And he'll have that, so he'll have direct contact with Southwick PD. If there's any event where we need anything, it's just a push button away.
All right, I need a motion.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David, congratulations and thank you for the work you do.
Oh, my pleasure. I'm glad we can have it here. It's a great town. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now I can go get on my motorcycle and get some issues.
All right. Next thing, procurement assistant services for the town of Southwick. You wanna go into this one?
Yeah, that's the, uh, the approval of the chairman to sign a local technical assistance agreement.
Okay.
Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for the Southwick Phi Department Roof and Masonry Project Design Services.
Right.
And our share will be 1,500. And as you can see, the town accountant has already certified it. Because your, your borrowing, your estimate by tying bond was 284 and your bond authorization ceiling to cover other incidental expenses is 300.
Motion for the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we have a memorandum of agreement between Town of Southwick and the local 424 labor unit at the DPW. And this is to, uh, enter into agreement with one of our employees that suffered an injury not on the job, uh, to do light duty for approximately 30 days. Does everybody, everybody understands it?
Uh, yeah.
Randy, no concerns? Okay. All right, so I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go, Cindy.
All right, then we have, uh, ribbon cutting for the Rail Trail Ale House this Friday, uh, at 4:00 PM. And Kate Phelan will be there with her ribbon and scissors and a citation from the Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, we have a official citation that we can sign also. What'd you do with that? Oh, you put it back. Magic marker? Anybody, uh, able to make the 4:00 PM?
I think so, as long as someone reminds me where I am. Literally, you know? Is that 4:30?
Four.
Four, so I'd love a text about quarter of. Give me enough time to change my shirt and run over.
Yeah, if you, uh, do the same with me and, and I might be able to run over too. But it's, uh, that's a tough one. All right, the next thing I have is a, uh, request from the Southwick Rotary. Uh, this is for their concerts that they work with the Cultural Council. Is this all the, or just that one event on the 17th?
Three of them.
There's three of them there. Okay. Uh, since we are technically all members of the Rotary, since we have a corporate membership.
Well, I didn't get sworn in, so I can, I can make that motion.
Well, we would still need to, uh, the rule of necessity, uh, because technically we are members of the Rotary.
Yes, you are.
So, uh, this is for alcohol to be served or sold that evening. Uh, their first concert is July 17th next week, uh, 6:00 PM to, uh, 9:00 PM. And I think that's gonna be the same for all their, uh, events, same, same time?
Yep.
Right?
And waving of the officer, I assume.
Waving of the officer, uh, they have the, uh, I guess it's been approved by Detective, uh, Lieutenant Landis. And they fence off the area where people are allowed to consume alcohol.
They've done a great job over there.
They do a good job.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
So they're three different dates.
So I need a motion?
Some move.
To approve as written?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so. We will sign it.
17th to 24th and August 14th.
If I missed anything, Doug, you can tell me.
Two more. Ooh.
Well, there's multiple sets.
For each day?
No, there's, that's one day each.
One. Joseph.
Thank you.
Two. So now when your wife gets mad at you, you got somewhere to go to 1:00 AM and you're not at a bar, you'll be at a teahouse.
A teahouse.
I mean, it's pretty interesting, actually.
I'm, I'm looking forward to it. You can go there and talk. All right.
You gotta find a friend, but anyways.
All right, I, I have.
Do the best you can. Do what you have.
These look like appointments here, but it looks like we have several other issues that are not in this.
We don't have the full, this is, this is through the building inspector.
All right, so I need a motion to authorize the chairman to execute an update in MOA with the city of Westfield for electrical inspection services.
I'll make that motion. So basically, he's looking to update our electrical inspector.
Oh.
It's just to continue.
So we got a motion.
We have a one-year.
Sure, second.
Last year, you signed a one-year deal.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So electrical, gas inspector, um.
Well, this, that's different than this. This is a.
Oh, are you sure?
Yeah, that's the, uh.
All right, well, wait.
This is an MOA with the city of Westfield.
Okay.
That's your other FY20 appointments later.
Gotcha.
All right, so we got a motion made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Authorized transfer of ACO officer to Town Clerk Treasurer Collector Office clerk position. Uh, as we know that Tracy, uh, has been over there helping out. And I had a discussion with Labor Council today concerning this issue. And, uh, he felt, uh, he would make the recommendation that we do this.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Vote to accept donations from Allied Tree Service in Crestview Construction for assistance in developing the Southwick Police Department range that will be just a range for our police officers.
That's a condition you put on the approval of it two weeks ago.
Right.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we've already done the Rotary, uh, appointments. Do we want to review those? I don't think we need to make any tonight, right?
Whatever you want to do. It's some of them, if you want to act on, and others, or you can just review them or.
I think we did all the ones that, that we needed to do right away.
Right, I think some of them you got back, the LMC ones, the canal ones, right, Cindy?
Yeah, I would put it out, which is my suggestion.
Fine with me.
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm with the building inspector over these. I'd like to, with your permission.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Good.
So we're gonna hold that off. Uh, we all know about the Rail Trail ribbon cutting. Uh, old business.
Yep.
Any old business, Mr. Stein?
Um, I did, the board did want to have the, um, old library insurance kept, you know, cause we are in the process of, Ben is still working on the.
Yeah, I reached out to every, all the parties.
Right.
And everyone's moving fast as they can.
They're, you know, they're just doing all they need to do to finish the details for the transfer. So that was the important thing that you had asked for.
Yes, and there'll be no charge mowing that library until they own it.
Yeah, because that was something that the, the buyer has agreed.
I got something out of it.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Steve.
Oh, and they got a flag out of it for some reason. I don't know why, but they wanted to buy a flag.
Flag too.
I don't know why.
For the 250th.
Yeah.
God bless them. Uh, any other old business? Any old businesses? Old business?
I have no idea where I am.
Okay. We're moving to new business. New business, Mr. Stein.
It would be Chief Bishop's request.
Right, we have, uh, the, the police department has asked for, um, a reserve to be appointed after going through two levels of interviews. And, uh, the police chief, uh, wants to make sure he can backfill.
Sounds like a great guy to get in front of us in our next meeting.
Aye, that's, you beat me to it, Mr. Clerk. We certainly would like to get this fine gentleman scheduled for a.
Yes, yes, he can come in for an interview.
In front of this board.
All right, so schedule that for, that we took care of that.
Oh, yeah.
Any other new business? All right, this letter concerning, uh, damage.
Yeah, that's something the, uh, the fire chief and the DPW director will be about and they'll go over that issue.
Okay.
We should commend the response by our emergency manager, first responder to the, that barn fire that we had and all the other shit.
There's a rough day, yeah.
In town on Saturday when, uh, everyone but Joe, you had everything.
I had everything control. I was actually out of town and held up on a certain part of Springfield, but.
Oh, okay, well, it makes all of us ready.
I thought I was going to bring Doug home with me.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm telling you, I didn't smell the smoke at all.
Which is kind of funny because the smoke that you would've smelt is coming from Alberta. There's a huge fire in Canada that's heading this way.
Did not smell the smoke at all.
Good job, no one got hurt.
That's, that's right.
Now, had to be hot as hell to burn the siding on, across the street.
Well, that's, I believe is their storage building. There's probably all sorts of different things in there that would combust, you know?
Human, too.
Um, but you, you hope that, uh, they have insurance and it doesn't affect the farming season.
No one got hurt.
And nobody got hurt.
That's serious.
Okay. Uh, any other new business? The only thing I was gonna bring up is, can we update the emergency contact list? Phone numbers and emails and get them out to everybody? Cause we haven't done that in a while.
Okay.
And there's some new people and, uh.
We've been working on that. Cindy and I've worked on it.
I think it's more updated than what you have, so I will.
Right, right.
I'll do a final update and we'll get a tip.
There's a reason you're not updated, Russ.
I, I, you know.
No, we've just worked on it.
They, they make me.
He was out of town anyway. Cause he paid the extra money for the Canada thing to work, but no one could talk to him anyways. All I could see was that someone was trying to get ahold of him. That's all I could see.
That's all I could see.
He was up there removing his vows. Nobody wanted to come.